Calling to order the 10-02 February 19 agenda. This meeting, including the audio and video of remote participants, is being streamed live on YouTube. You will find links to viewing options for all Senate meetings on the live and on-demand video page of our website. In the unlikely event that we have to abruptly end this hearing due to technical difficulties, the committee will reconvene to discuss any outstanding business on Wednesday, February 26, 10:00 a.m. in this room. This is decision-making only. If you're interested in reviewing written testimony, please go to our website. You will find the link on the status page for each measure. Okay. First item is SB 40. Recommendation is to pass with amendments defecting the effective date to 2050. Any discussion? Not chair voteside.
Senate Bill 40, Chair Voltsai, Vice Chair Voltsai, Senator McKino, Senator DeCoit, Senator Elafante, Senator Hashimoto, Senator Inoue, Senator Kanuha, Senator Kidani, Senator Kim, Senator Lee, Senator Wakai, Senator Favela. Measure adopted.
Thank you. Next item, SB 411. Recommendation is to pass with amendments adding a five-year sunset to the Act and changing the annual report to a quarterly report. Any discussion? Not chair voteside.
SB 411, all members present, anyone voting no with reservation, measure adopted. No vote for Favela.
Thank you. SB 436. Recommendation is to pass unamended. Any discussion? Not chair voteside.
Senate Bill 436, pass unamended. All members present, anyone voting no with reservation, measure adopted.
Thank you. Next item, SB 443. Recommendation is to pass unamended. Any discussion? Not chair voteside.
SB 443, all members present, anyone voting no, anyone with reservation, measure adopted.
Next item, SB 446. Recommendation is to pass with amendments. And we worked with the subject matter chair to amend 342 H-52 to change the buffer zone from one-half to quarter-mile and remove all references to a no-pass zone and amend the bill so that no landfill unit or component of that landfill unit can be built MAUCA of the underground injection control line. Insert definitions for MAUCA and underground injection control line to effectuate the bill. Any discussion?
Yeah, Chair, just like make a point. We do this buffer zone. There's nothing in here that's going to prevent them to putting it on island, even in our side of the island. And we know that the mayor said he wasn't going to put nothing on the west side, but he only get three more years and can change. So we had the landfill for the longest, anybody on Oahu, over 50 years we had landfills. That will help our community. Fifty percent of our lifespan is gone because of living next to landfills and people are living in other urban area. If we're going to do this, I mean, I don't vote no. If we're going to do this, we've got to make sure we protect the people on our side of the island because Kailua never wanted them. That's the reason why it's over there. So they call it Waimanalo gouge, it wasn't Waimanalo, but it's in our community. I just don't feel it's fair for my community that we work hard and that bill be amended right now. But I'm voting no, take it, Chair.
Thank you. I also think that every community was going to want to make sure they have clean, safe water. Every community. Any further discussion? If not, chair voteside.
Okay. SB 446, all members present, anyone voting no with reservation, oh, no for Favela. Anyone else voting no with reservation, measure adopted.
Thank you. Next item, SB 447. Recommendation is to pass unamended. Any discussion? Not chair voteside.
All members present, anyone voting no with reservation, measure adopted.
Thank you. Next item, SB 572. Recommendation is to pass with amendments defecting the effective date to 2050. Any discussion? Not chair voteside.
All members present, anyone voting no with reservation, measure adopted.
Thank you. Next item, SB 583. Recommendation is to pass with amendments. Amending to remove any references to the selling of naming rights.
Chair, I'll be voting with reservations, noting the concerns from the outdoor circle. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So we're removing selling, it's only leasing. Any discussion? Not chair voteside.
All members present, I'm voting no, and Elafante with reservation, anyone else? A Favela reservation, measure adopted.
Thank you. Next item, SB 739. Recommendation is to pass with amendments, adopt LRB tech amendments and amend Section 2A to read that the governor may negotiate land exchanges in consultation with the Board of Land and Natural Resources. Any discussion?
What about with the seated lands and the rate of exchange requirement of the 20% revenue for Oahu? How is that going to work in this bill?
No, so what this does is it looks at private landowners who have conservation or ag land or preservation land that they would like to develop. So the state would try to acquire that and in exchange, give them some urban land.
So again, how is that going to affect? If we have land that we're supposed to get revenue for Oahu, how is that going to affect when we give the land to the place that they could develop?
That's if the state gives, the state would have to exchange seated land for that to happen, which I don't think that's the case. Because if you look at Kapole, Hawk Center, that was all Campbell land.
Yeah.
Okay, any discussion? Thank you.
SB 739, all members present, anyone voting no with reservation.
Reservation.
Favela reservation. Measure adopted.
Thank you. Next item, SB 742. Recommendation is to pass with amendments, adopt LRB tech amendments and repeal the working group on June 30, 2026. Any discussion?
SB 742, all members present, anyone voting no with reservation, measure adopted.
Thank you. Next item, SB 746. Recommendation is to pass with amendments, adopting LRB tech amendments. Any discussion? Not chair voteside.
SB 746, all members present, anyone voting no with reservation, measure adopted.
Thank you. Next item, SB 816. Recommendation is to pass with amendments, adopting LRB tech amendments. Any discussion? Not chair voteside.
SB 816, pass with amendments, anyone voting no with reservation, measure adopted.
Thank you. Next item, SB 826. Recommendation is to pass with amendments, adopting LRB tech amendments. And we're going to amend the measure to disqualify any State Department or attached agency from claiming the low-income tax, low-income housing tax credit for developers outlined in HRS 235-1108 and remove language specific to SFA or School Facilities Board and its respective statutes and defect the date to 2050. Any discussion? Not chair voteside.
SB 826, pass with amendments, all members present, anyone voting no with reservation, measure adopted.
Thank you. Next item, SB 830. Recommendation is to pass with amendments. Working with subject matter chair, we're going to take from testimony from DLNR and amend the bill to read that reconstruction of any lawfully constructed structure that is sustain- substantively similar to its original footprint or overall dimensions that were damaged or destroyed in a disaster proclaimed by the governor or a mayor to constitute a state of emergency or local state of emergency under Section 127A-14 and a disaster declared pursuant to federal law, provided that the disaster is not related to wave, storm, storm surge, high tide, flooding, erosion, sea level rise or subsidence. Any discussion? Not chair voteside.
SB 830, pass with amendments, all members present, anyone voting no with reservation, measure adopted.
Thank you. Next item, SB 841. Recommendation is to pass unamended. Any discussion? Not chair voteside.
SB 841, pass unamended, all members present, anyone voting no with reservation, measure adopted.
Thank you. Next item, SB 850. Recommendation is to pass with amendments. Amending to include State Council on Developmental Disabilities Recommendations and Proposals Based on Their Findings on How Agencies and Departments Can Implement Legislation and Policies to Reduce Health Disparities Experienced by Individuals with Intellectual or Developmental Disabilities in the Report. Any discussion? Not chair voteside.
SB 850, pass with amendments, all members present, anyone voting no, reservation.
Thank you. Next item, SB 865. Recommendations to pass unamended. Any discussion? Not chair voteside.
SB 865, pass unamended, all members present, anyone voting no with reservation, measure adopted.
Thank you. Next item, SB 952. Recommendation is to pass with amendments, adopt LRB tech amendments and amend language to have the program administered by the Department of Human Services, provided that we partner with the Office of Wellness Resiliency on the design of the pilot program. Any discussion? Not chair voteside.
SB 952, pass with amendments, members voting no with reservation, measure adopted.
Thank you. Next item, SB 955. Recommendation is to pass with amendments. Her testimony will adopt the Department of Health language on page 5, line 4, to read as follows. "To commit the defendant, provided further that the court shall hold status hearings on the Hawaii State Hospital grounds no less than once a calendar week. This will allow qualified examiners adequate time to administer fitness assessments and insert a sunset date of December 31st, 2026, for a pilot study of the proposed changes in this measure." Any discussion? Not chair voteside.
Senate Bill 955, pass with amendments, members, anyone voting no with reservation, measure adopted.
Okay, next item, SB 983. We're going to defer. Next item, SB 1040. Recommendation is to pass with amendments, adopting LRB tech amendments. Any discussion? Not chair voteside.
SB 1040, all members present, anyone voting no with reservation, measure adopted.
Thank you. Next item, SB 1042. Recommendation is to pass unamended. Any discussion? Not chair voteside.
Senate Bill 1042, pass unamended, members present, voting no with reservation, measure adopted.
Thank you. Next item, SB 1083. Recommendation is to pass with amendments and adopt LRB tech amendments. Any discussion? Not chair voteside.
SB 1083, pass with amendments, anyone voting no with reservation, measure adopted.
Okay, next item, SB 1229. Recommendation is to pass with amendments, adopting LRB tech amendments and removing language making the Dwellet Unit Revolving Fund Equity Pilot Program permanent and extending the pilot program to June 30, 2030 and defecting the date to 2050. Any discussion? Not chair voteside.
SB 1229, pass with amendments, anyone voting no with reservation, measure adopted.
Thank you. Next item, SB 1359. Recommendation is to pass unamended. Any discussion? Not chair voteside.
SB 1359, pass unamended, anyone voting no with reservation, measure adopted.
Thank you. Next item, SB 1469. Recommendation is to pass with amendments, adopting LRB tech amendments. Any discussion? Not chair voteside.
SB 1469, pass with amendments, anyone voting no with reservation, measure adopted.
Thank you. Next item, SB 1553. Recommendation is to pass with amendments using funds to be appropriated from Act 279, the special fund in DHL. Any discussion? Not chair voteside.
All members present, anyone voting no with reservation, measure adopted.
Thank you. Next item, SB 1578. Recommendation is to pass with amendments, adopting LRB tech amendments and adopting an amendment from the Attorney General to include standards for the East-West Center to meet in order to receive public funds for official designation purposes. Any discussion? Not chair.
Senate Bill 1578, pass with amendments, anyone voting no with reservation, reservation for Favela.
Thank you. Next item, SB 1602. Recommendation is to pass with amendments, blanking the appropriation, defecting the date to 2050. And we'll let the committee report reflect the appropriation amounts in Section 2. Any discussion? Not chair voteside.
SB 1602, amendments, anyone voting no with reservation, adopt.
Next item, SB 1609. Recommendation is to pass unamended. Any discussion? Not chair voteside.
Senate Bill 1609, pass unamended, anyone voting no with reservation, measure adopted.
Thank you. Next item, SB 1610. Recommendation is to pass with amendments, adopting LRB tech amendments and removing language to make the, to make the O'Hana Zones program permanent. On page 4, line 17, required that Kahalas must have connections to public utilities such as water, sewer and electricity. Define Kahalas on page 11, line 15, as a program to address basic needs of individuals who experience houselessness and affordable housing spaces that are communal living spaces with individual household units and charge money rents no more than 30% area median income level. And in the appropriation language, insert a proviso that would cap the amount that can be spent on Kahalas to a blank amount of total appropriation in both fiscal years. Any discussion?
Just a clarification, so the Kahali homes that they're going, usually built, it has to be connected to electric or just water?
Well, this require, this would require that they all be connected.
So they cannot have the solar like how they did in Papa's point.
So this would be, if this law passes, this would be the requirement.
Good, thank you, Chair.
Any discussion? Not chair voteside.
SB 1610, pass with amendments, anyone voting no with reservation, measure adopted.
Thank you. Next item, SB 1619. Recommendation is to pass with amendments, defecting the effective date to 2050. Any discussion? Not chair voteside.
SB 1619, pass with amendments, anyone voting no with reservation, measure adopted.
Thank you. Next item, SB 1614. Recommendation, I'm sorry, 1641. Recommendation is to pass with amendments, adopt LRB tech amendments. And under 21EC, required that non-exoficial members shall not serve consecutive four-year terms. Insert a new section to establish the Film Industry Development Special Fund under the Commission. Amend the appropriation in Section 4 so the general funds are deposited into the new special fund. Insert a new section to include an appropriation out of the special fund and insert general language to transfer all personnel from the Hawaii State Film Office from DBED to the new commission and defect the date to 2050. Any discussion?
Chair, just clarification, so all, all the people in the Film Commission office right now is going to transfer to to this department?
Yeah.
All of them?
There's four. Any discussion? Not chair voteside.
Senate Bill 1641, pass with amendments, anyone voting no with reservation.
Reservation.
If measure adopted.
Okay, this is the 10-02 agenda, starting with Senate Bill 1220. Wait, recess. Okay. First item, SB 1220. We'll be deferring till March, not March, February 26, 10:00 a.m. in this room. And next item, SB 828. We'll be deferring till February 26, 10:00 a.m. in this room. Okay, calling to order the Joint Committee on Ways and Means and Judiciary. This is the 10-10:15 hearing. SB 442. Okay, we have testifiers, Department of Law Enforcement.
Good morning, Chairs, Vice Chairs, Members of Committee. Brandon Asuka, testifying on behalf of the Department of Law Enforcement. Department supports this measure and requests that we make the following recommended amendments in our testimony to include DLE as part of this measure. Thank you.
Thank you. Department of Ag in support, Attorney General.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee, Jenny Nakamoto, Deputy Attorney General. We did submit written testimony in support of the bill and I do apologize for the late submission. I do have copies if the committees require them.
David.
May I approach?
Oh, you guys can grab it. It's on testifier.
Available for any questions.
Members, any question? Senator Kidani.
Does this mean that the six-month waiting period before returning to state and county employment still apply or does not apply?
It doesn't apply, right?
Um, I believe it would be, it would be the 12 calendar month would be the waiting period under the, I'm sorry, it would be the 12 calendar month waiting periods under Proposal 6A. The retirement was not employed by the state or county during the 12 months, 12 calendar months prior to the first day. So it would be 12 months.
That would still apply?
Correct.
Thank you.
Yeah, but that defeats the purpose of what you guys wanted, I thought.
Oh, that, that, I'm sorry, that's the, the proposed change is the 12 months.
Oh, but the current bill?
Oh, I'm sorry, the current bill is, I believe, six months. Six calendar months, yes.
Okay. But then part of the issue was when the Attorney General needed to find inspectors and they hired former law enforcement, they're going to wait the six months?
I believe it's 12 months, but let me, if you allow me, I can bring that question back to my office and clarify.
Yeah, because I thought, I thought the whole point was that you want to try to hire them sooner.
That was my understanding as well, but let me, I understand your question, they want to hire them sooner, the six months as opposed to the 12.
Yeah, because if not what you guys are doing currently, we're just doing this years of 89-day hire.
That's correct.
So this at least gives you an option versus we don't normally appreciate the continual 89-day hire.
Understood. Yes, I'll get clarification for your question, if that's all right.
Yeah, so how, how long do you normally hire a retiree? How, how long do you do the 89-day? What's the longest you've done it?
I don't have that information offhand.
Years.
I mean, my understanding is, yeah, there's, it's continuous, as long as you do the 89 days, you can continue to employ them.
Yeah, so we're, you know, one of the things we're considering is a five-year cap. So if we, if you, if we hire a retiree, because they're retired, they're basically retiring, but part of the state's problem and challenge is that we have no succession planning. So when someone leaves, we can at least hire a retiree back for a couple of years at a lower position to train other people. Because when, unlike business, we don't do, we don't put two people in the same position for even six months. So that's becoming a problem as more and more, you know, baby boomers retire and we don't have succession planning. There's no training. But the six months would make that difficult.
Understood. I will get clarification for your answer, for your questions, if that's okay, and we'll get back to you.
Okay. Good, oh, go ahead.
I want to bring up another issue. So we have been consistently for law enforcement allowing retiring, retiring 20 years, right? It's, and, and the reason is because the job is stressful and there's a lot of, but then if they retire and then we rehire them, so what, what, what happens to that whole purpose of why they need to retire early? If they're going to be coming back and working, working again in the same, either same position or similar type of position, which, you know, also bodes well for 89-day hire, now you can hire them. So it's, it's just that whole, that whole policy of why we're allowing certain, certain categories of workers to have a 20-year horizon because of this kind of stress yet. They're coming back and working again. Shouldn't then everybody have 20 years? If that's the case, I mean, I'm just saying.
Well, I think that one though, if you're a police officer on the, on, on the street versus you're coming back to work at the AG's office in an office.
Yeah, but that's not all police officers are on the street. There are a lot of police officers that work at the desk and stuff like that, right? And they all get.
And they have the same health risks at the desk.
I think so.
You have the same health risk at the desk?
Just saying, though, but they could go back to the same place, very hazardous. I have a question.
This is hazardous.
You're right.
When that policy was made for the police department, the 20 years was an option. So is it mandatory now?
No, that's not the case now. They, they, they're the same as every 20, 30 years, right?
Because they can continue.
I don't know, Dan.
We don't have anyone in our permanent class B or B right now.
Oh, for DLE. But HPD what?
I think our investigator, we don't have anyone that's there.
No, but for law enforcement, do they have a shorter?
Yes.
Yeah, they have 20 years.
What is it?
Well, at least 25 for HPD for Class B right now.
Well, SA is 20.
Yes, yeah, or 25, I believe. 25, yeah.
I think at one point we actually extended.
Extended, yeah. It's a little longer now. It was longer.
Yeah.
21 to 22.
Yeah. I mean, ERS knows from every job in the state, the average lifespan. So the longest living state employees are DOE teachers and UH professors.
I wonder why.
Unless, unless you're the senator from Gilo. Okay, any other?
Chair, as part of AG. I see that the AG is asking for pass only question of the bill. I feel one difficult investigative individual. But how many positions in investigating office that is currently vacant? And what is the salary currently for vacant positions?
I don't have that information offhand. I do have old data from last year, but if, if you would like, I can bring that back to my office and.
Yeah, just, I guess.
Yeah, so part of it, that's why we figured, similar to some of the other concerns, is that because they are retired, that's what we've figured out, but they want to help and we need their help. But five years seem to be more than reasonable as the length of someone's return.
So do they stop getting retirement pay?
No.
So they're collecting retirement benefits and pain?
But you're not getting benefits anymore.
But they're getting their.
It's similar to 89 days, exact same as 89 days. So 89 days, you get your pension and your, your benefits and you get the 89-day contract. So it's exactly the same, except because of concerns that we don't like the 89-day recurring. This tries to solve the issue.
Because 89 days says it's supposed to be emergency, that's the law, it's emergency.
And what, what is the salary? Are they getting the same as they got when they retired?
It's not be a lower position. Yeah. Yeah, because if someone took your, your old administrative position, that was the only position. That's the issue is you can't train anybody. Because in, in business, you have your position, they've hired a new person, you're there for a little while to at least train the new guy. But we don't do that in the state.
It's stupid vacant, so.
Like construction, you know?
Yeah, just so it's clear, he's not training me to be Lamb chair.
You know how many, these guys' bills would all die. Anyway, Henry will figure this out in conference. But I mean, you know, I just, there should probably be a cap. I don't think it should go, that's why I was asking, how long is the 89-day? But what we tried, but what we tried to do is at least give in the proposed amendment, what it tries to do is if you need to go further than the five years, then you could get a a waiver from the D.
But it's still finally, it's the 89-day hire, Chair, because the 89-day hire says you can only do it for emergency purposes and it's not necessarily emergency.
Yeah, so this changes that. Yeah, so this changes that.
Yeah, so they should, it shouldn't go for five years, emergency for five years, it's not.
Well, we can leave it blank years and you can figure it out, yeah.
But it's an emergency if they can't find people to hire unless it's eighty nine day.
No, but everything is, that's my, but then you should just.
Well, yeah, but there's, but there's multiple issues, there's that issue, but there's also the issue of no succession planning. Because unfortunately, like, I'll take out, I'll give you somebody like Dennis Lee. If he leaves, I don't know if anybody's really ready to take his place, and so he might have to go and.
Yeah, but then he couldn't be hired for eighty nine day hires, but not five.
But then it's not an emergency.
It's not anymore, but to.
Yeah. Training and succession planning is not considered an emergency. Yeah, yeah. I mean, that's part of, even with the A G's office, that's why you got people like Shannen, Aina, and probably Randy, Randall Nishiyama when he retired, they're they're all volunteering. To train, because they're so committed. But that, I don't know how that, that's gonna last, I don't know how long that's gonna last. Okay, I mean, half these guys are probably gonna do that, you're probably gonna do that. Anyway. Okay, any any further discussion? We have um two, three, four, five, eight opposed and one comment. Okay, we can go into decision making. Recommendation is to pass with amendments, adopt language from D L E's testimony to include investigators within the department. In section two, number seven, expand to include all state departments struggling to fill managerial positions. That have been identified as labor shortages or difficult to fill. Or needs succession planning. And require that if a retiree were to return to serve under this section, they can serve a term of no more than blank. Years and require that if their department wants to extend the contract, it must seek approval from the D heard uh director. And defect the date to twenty fifty. Any discussion? Not cheerful side.
S B four four two, pass with amendments, um Chair Zunzai, Vice Chair Zunzai, I go keynote.
Same recommendation for J D C members, questions or concerns, if not, uh acting vice chair Chang.
S B four forty two for the J D C committee, chairs recommendations to pass with amendments, Chair Rhodes. Vice Chair Gabbard is excused, Senator Chang, I, Senator Semenova Tur. Recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, so you can see all the division heads nodding. Okay. Hey, calling to order the Joint Committee on Ways and Means and Judiciary, this is the ten sixteen agenda starting with S B seven sixteen. This is for decision making only. First item is S B seven sixteen, recommendation is to pass with amendments defecting the date to twenty fifty. Any discussion? Not cheerful side.
Bill seven sixteen, pass with amendments, all members present, anyone voting no, reservation is adopted.
Okay, J D C member, same recommendation, S B seven sixteen with amendments, questions or concerns, if not, Senator Chang.
For S B seven sixteen, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments, Chair Rhodes. Vice Chair Gabbard is excused, Senator Chang, I, Senator Semenova Tur. Recommendation is adopted.
Thank, thank you, next item.
Just an amendment on this one. Putting it in the same category as um. Narcotics Division.
Okay, next item, S B seven six three, recommendation is to pass with amendments. And we're going to amend. To include language that says. Subject to the direction or control of the Deputy Director of Law Enforcement. To standardize the placement of agricultural enforcement program consistent with the placement of narcotics enforcement division. Within the D L E organizational chart and making conforming amendments. Any discussion, not cheerful side.
S B seven six three, pass with amendments, anyone voting no, with reservation.
Same recommendation for J D C, questions or concerns, if not, Senator Chang.
For S B seven sixty three, recommendation is to pass with amendments, any of the members present who have any objections or reservations? Seeing none, the recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, next item, S B eight oh four, recommendation is to pass with amendments, adopt L R B tech amendments. And will include amendments from the Attorney General to mitigate. Any issues against potential retroactive applications and contractual impairment issues. Any discussion, that cheerful side.
The bill eight oh four, pass with amendments, all members present, anyone voting no with reservation.
Sure, uh J for J D C member, same recommendation, uh questions or concerns, if not, vice chair, um acting vice chair.
S B eight oh four, Chair's recommendation is to pass amendments, of the members present who have any objections or reservations? Seeing none, the recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, next item, S B eight two five, recommendation is to pass unamended, any discussion?
Yeah.
Well, you have.
Well, just, it's really just a question, the one your timeframe seems short to us. Is would it make, would it make sense to make it two? And then the other question I had was, could do, if we, even when we sunset the. The 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 two year thing, the uh the extension of the notice period would still be useful, even if the. I can't come up with the right word today, if you cut, even if we, even when the. Uh, the two year thing ends, if we extend the fi- the five to ten day calendar for the termination of the rental agreements, I think would still be useful.
Okay.
If you're willing to do that. If you don't want to, that's fine. Okay, sorry.
Hey, calling the uh meeting back to order, this is S B eight two five, so the recommendation would be to pass with amendments. And will extend the project to two years and require that the judiciary do a report within ninety days of. Uh completion of the demonstration project. Any discussion? Not cheerful side.
S B eight two five, pass with amendments, all members present, anyone voting no with reservation.
Uh, for J D C member, same recommendation, questions or concerns, if not, Senator Chang.
S B eight two five, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments, of the members, do you have any objections or reservations? Seeing none, the recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, next item, S B eleven hundred. Hey, re- uh recommendation is to pass with amendments, adopt L R B tech amendments. And remove any discretionary power from the Department of Agriculture by removing any language with the phrase may. Replacing it with shall between pages fifty nine and sixty eight. Inserting new section requirements, posting of invasive species dashboard for treatment areas by H D O A, D L N R. And all contracted parties. The dashboard must be up no later than December first, twenty twenty five. And inserting a requirement that any department, agency, or third party contractor that does not provide information for invasive species dashboard. Shall not receive funding. Any discussion? Not cheerful side.
S B one hundred, pass with amendments, all members present, anyone voting no, reservation.
Okay, uh, for J D C member, same recommendation, I I do have a comment about it, though, I I'm still um. I I'm I'm voting, I I support it, I think it's a really important bill. Or potentially a really important bill, but I'm, I do have reservations about taking, putting H I S K under the Department of Agriculture, even if Department of Agriculture is um. Restructured, so I I do hope that we'd follow the New Zealand model, cuz I think that they probably do give their. Their H I S K analog or their H I S K equivalent a lot of power and they ignore uh commercial agricultural interests. When they feel it's necessary to protect the biosecurity of the country, so recommendation is move it ahead with the amendment amendments. But uh do have some concerns about the final product, any other questions or concerns, if not, Senator Chang.
Chair's recommendation for S B eleven hundred is to pass with amendments, of the members present who have any objections or reservations? Seeing none, the recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. Well, the the New Zealand model has it consolidated.
Bet you the H I S K, I bet you the H I S K of New Zealand has a lot of authority, that's, that's.
It's under one, yeah. And then now what this does is if the department doesn't have a choice, if someone has reported.
I think the amendments were good amendments.
They have to proceed. Okay, next item, S B fourteen thirty two. Okay, we're gonna have to defer this item till February twenty sixth, sorry, cuz you flew over for this, but um. L R B. Has some changes that they're trying to work on that are substantive to deal with legal issues. So we ju- we need to give L R B some time to help draft some of those, some of the language to address the legal concerns. And. They also recommend that we work with. The Attorney General on some of these amendments to just make sure that they're constitutional, so we 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 just need some time for that. So that'll be February twenty six, two, two twenty six. Two twenty six P M, sorry, you gotta come in.
So for J D C members, we'll go ahead and, we'll go ahead and meet for decision. J D C members, we'll go ahead and meet at the same time here in two eleven, um at two twenty six on February twenty sixth.
Yeah, I don't know, that's awkward time, but.
So, two twenty six at two twenty six P M.
Two twenty six as well.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Yeah, two twenty. S B uh sixteen oh one. Recommendation is to pass with amendments, adopt L R B tech amendments and insert. Under dash five, that the term of a loan shall be no longer than twenty years. And that no new loan may be issued after June thirty, twenty twenty seven. Insert a new section to repeal the act and the revolving fund on June thirty, twenty forty seven. And at the remaining balance of the revolving fund laps into the general fund. Any discussion? Not cheerful side.
S B sixteen oh one, pass with amendments, anyone voting no with reservation.
Reservation.
Hey, thank you.
Uh Chair's recommendation on S B sixteen oh one is same as uh lamb chairs, questions or concerns, if not, Senator Chang.
For S B sixteen oh one, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments, are there any objections or reservations? Seeing none, the recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, next item, S B sixteen sixty seven, recommendation is to pass with amendments, adopt L R B tech amendments. And adopt amendments from the Department of Transportation to make the prohibition of vehicles stopping in and blocking cross, crosswalks enforceable way. Or without signage of curb markings and to allow the appropriated sums in this measure to be used. By the Department of Transportation or county agencies to effectuate the purposes of this act.
But sure, I got a couple of other amendments I was hoping we could consider um. Right now, apparently the uh data, they they, for the red light cameras.
If it's if it's um subject matter, then we gotta check with subject matter.
No, this was asking for money so that they could upgrade the uh, cuz right now they're doing it manually. And so if we have, if they can automatically. So it would just be a blank appropriation for judicial, judicial, update the database so that system can electronically pull information from the citations and transfer. Transfer, transfer the data into court records. I don't, if you don't wanna consider it, that's fine, but it seems ridiculous that the.
Yeah.
You okay? Okay, and then um they they wanted to delay the implementation of the citations to, the judiciary did to. Um, from the imaging detectors to January one, twenty twenty seven, okay? And I don't know if you're, you had an amendment on section four two as well. It would allow for appeals of a judge's suspension, so we would repeat, delete the amendment of section four that would allow for appeal of a judge's suspension to the sentence to a person. Uh, who consumed a measurable amount of alcohol to fulfill his administrative drivers and just make it so that it would just, the appeal would be to the Supreme Court, to the where it is now. Is that correct? Yeah, to where it is now.
Recession, recession. Back to S B sixteen sixty seven, so we have the amendment that I read earlier and will also. Include the following amendments, inserting blank appropriation for judiciary to update its database system. Uh, delay implementation to January first, twenty twenty seven. And delete amendment in section four of the bill that would allow for appeals of a judge's suspension of the license of a person under age. Twenty one, who consumed a measurable amount of alcohol to be filed with the Administrative Drivers License Revocation Office. As current law allows for these license suspensions to be appealed to the Supreme Court. Any further discussion, not cheerful side.
Present, uh, anyone voting no with reservation, measured up.
Same recommendation for J D C, questions or concerns, if not, Senator Chang.
Chair's recommendation for S B sixteen sixty seven is to pass with amendments, are there any objections or reservations among members present? No for Senator Wong, thank you, the recommendation is adopted.
Okay, next up on the agenda is S B one oh four, restricts the use of restricted, restrictive housing in state operated and state contracted correctional facilities with certain specified exceptions. Our recommendation, S B one oh four, is to add language to paragraph. A twelve and page nine to state that a person in restricted housing shall not be desired, not be denied access to their legal counsel. Questions or concerns? If not, Senator Chang.
For S B one oh four, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments, of the members present, are there any objections or reservations? Hearing none, the recommendation is adopted.
Ways and means same recommendation.
Uh, anyone voting no, pass with amendments, anyone voting no with reservation.
Well, thanks, next up is S B two two four, requires Department of Corrections and Rehabilitation in collaboration with various agencies. Upon request of the inmates to assist inmates in obtaining the inmate's civil identification, birth certificate and other documents. Uh, recommendation is to pass with amendment, make it to duty to perform the acts required in the bill. Um, even if, so there's a deadline that you have to have it done by, if they miss the deadline for whatever reason, there's, the. Department of Corrections would still be under the obligation to supply the documents. Questions or concerns, if not, Senator Chang.
Chair's recommendation for S B two two four is to pass with amendments, of the members present, are there any objections or reservations? Hearing none, the recommendation is adopted.
Ways and means same recommendation.
Thank you, next up is S B three fifty, this proposes an amendment to Article one of the Constitution of Hawaii to protect a person's right to obtain contraceptions and engage in contraception. Uh, recommendation is to pass unamended, questions or concerns? If not, oh, go ahead, Senator Kim.
Yeah, I believe, we already have a law, right, on the books?
Not specifically for contraceptions, no.
I mean, I would prefer a law versus putting it into the constitution and then also notice there's no age on that, so. Yeah, I understand my concerns.
Good. Other questions or concerns, if not, Senator Chang for J D C.
For S B three fifty, the Chair's recommendation is to pass unamended, of the members present, are there any objections or reservations? Noting Senator Wong's objection, the recommendation is adopted.
Ways and means, same recommendation.
And Fadella?
No.
No.
Thank you, next up is S B three fifty two, requires the Department of Ag to use consistent units of measurements in its summary to the public on the amounts of restricted use pesticides applied. Uh, recommendation is to pass as is, questions or concerns, seeing on Senator Chang.
Chair's recommendation for S B three five two is to pass unamended, of the members present, are there any? Chair's recommendation for S B three five two is to pass unamended. Are the members present, are there any objections or reservations? Seeing none, the recommendation is adopted.
Ways and means, same recommendation.
Reservation. Reservation.
Reservations.
And Al Fanti.
Okay, next up is S B thirteen twenty four. This amends multiple definitions and penalties for fireworks offenses um including heightened penalties if another person suffers substantial bodily injury. Uh recommendation here is to pass with some amendments. We'll insert language into uh section one thirty two D uh fireworks prohibitions in the second degree to clarify that the offense is only committed if done with the permit issued pursuant to section one thirty two D ten and one thirty two D sixteen as requested by the A G. This is to ensure that people who hold permits to use aerial devices to display fireworks or articles pyrotechnic pursuant to those two sections are able to continue those permits for fireworks displays as intended. Also insert language into one thirty two D um prohibiting sending or receiving fireworks by air delivery to clarify that the offense is not committed if the sending or receiv- even receiving is done as permitted pursuant to federal law. And there's some S M A texts as well. Questions or concerns?
Question.
Yes.
Does this bill um provide any funding for um you know, for law enforcement to check on how these fireworks are coming in, et cetera? I mean, there's no specific enforcement body than this.
Yeah, there there is an appropriation. Yeah.
Thank you.
But there's also the
But there's several.
Task force bill.
Yeah, there's several other fireworks that are still alive. Yeah. Other questions or concerns? If not, Senator Chang.
For S B thirteen twenty four, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Are the members present, are there any objections or reservations?
No.
Noting Senator Wa's no vote, recommendations.
Thank you.
But you guys hold.
Oh. Same recommendation we said we. Trivial side.
S B fifteen twenty four, pass with amendments. All members present, anyone voting no with reservation.
Thank you.
Thank you.